Here.
About home lines.
Here.
Tom Ricker, Associate Planner Lisa Ritchie.
Present.
Attorney Ms. Reese.
Here.
Thank you. Number three is approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda or have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
I so moved.
Oh, second.
I moved.
Motion by Commissioner Eaton, second by Commissioner Buzell. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
I can sit here forever.
Next is public comment on consent agenda or non-agenda items. Anyone who wishes to make public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, the approval of the October 7th, 2014 minutes. Do we have any comments or discussion on the minutes? Okay, a motion to approve the minutes.
Move that we approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, second. Motion by Commissioner Mummert and second by Commissioner Lasis. All those in favor? Pass is unanimous. Next is item number six, public hearing and adoption of a resolution approving a final plat and a final development plan and review and comment on vested property rights and a street vacation. Public hearing is now open. Do we have proof of publication?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. Have a brief introduction from staff and then developer presentation.
You betcha. Tonight, we are here to consider the approval of a final development plan, final plat, and provide the opportunity for the planning commission to review and comment on vested rights and a street vacation for Calmonte. This is the really similar application to what was presented to you in its zoning level back in April. The primary changes that have transpired over that time are a reduction in the number of lots from 39 down to 33, the addition of the potential for three-car garages or two-car garage with a storage bay on every lot, and per your suggestion, and the town board approval of the transfer or the creation of Calmonte Street into a cul-de-sac. So with that, David Gregg with Boulder Creek Builders is here to present.
Good evening, commissioners. It's nice to be here at the final stretch to present our Calmonte II final site plan and final plat for your consideration. We have, as was mentioned, worked out all the technical issues with staff to be here tonight with just very few changes to what you saw prior at the preliminary, and I'll touch on those a little bit. I do want to thank staff. Been working really well and really quickly through this process. Certainly, I could say compared to some of your sister cities, Superior works at the speed of business, not the speed of government, and we're very pleased to be able to work through this as we have. I will briefly go through the concept. Not much has changed since the last presentation. It was mentioned that the density has been reduced. In large part, that was so that we could assure that we could offer a three-car garage on every patio home. And so that has come down from 39 to 33 homes. The homes are senior-friendly, main-floor-living patio homes. They're targeted for a retired empty nester population, and it's a type of housing that's encouraged by your comping specifically. There's an aging population in Superior, as there is in every municipality we work in, and a shortage of this type of all-main-floor-living, senior-friendly housing. The densities, the reduced densities now, the gross is 3.06, and then that is 2.3 dwelling units per acre. We do a theater-style street loading to enhance the senior-friendliness of the homes, and I'll talk about that a little bit on a subsequent slide. We have voluntarily chose to significantly set back from McCaslin and its noise and issues of 100 feet at a minimum. And as all Boulder Creek's neighborhoods, this will be a fully HOA-maintained and covenant-controlled community. Quickly, this is the site. You're familiar with its location, southeast corner of McCaslin and, not Cassillon, Cassillon.
McCaslin.
McCaslin.
Colton. Colton and McCaslin. Cassillon is the interior street, which we'll get to in a second on the next slide. This shows, it's not really a change. When we were here before, Cassillon Street, which is this right here, was shown going all the way through, connecting to McCaslin. We were requested to take a look at what if we ended that in a cul-de-sac rather than connecting it through to McCaslin. We found that we were somewhat indifferent to the two. So we took to the board of trustees the choice, and we had them discuss it, and the majority consensus was that they felt like the cul-de-sac termination would be the better choice, so that's what we've come back before you with. I put this landscape plan up because it's rather simple illustrative that allows me to talk a little bit about the theater loading. You'll notice that the lots are single-loaded on the streets. The garage doors and the front doors are on the high side of the lot. We don't double-front the streets. When you do that, you always end up with one high side and one low side. The high side's the one that always ends up with all the steps out of the garage into the home. That doesn't work for our buyer. This is certainly a little bit more expensive, but it assures us that every home has the distinct possibility of having a zero-step or one-step entry from the garage and from the street into the home. A secondary benefit on this particular site, because of the direction of the topography, is that every home's a view lot, which we're very excited about, too. Everything faces north and west. This is another, also a nice graphic, because you can just graphically see the amount of open space that we're bringing forward on the project. And briefly, I thought I'd mention also trying to innovate for our particular buyer. These are going to be very interesting and innovative streets with attached sidewalks on the driveway side, detached sidewalks across the street where there are no driveways and front doors. The reason for that is our senior buyers have senior visitors, and we find that tree lawns are uncomfortable, to say the least, for a senior to navigate. If there's snow piled on it, if it's wet from irrigation, it's just not our senior-friendly configuration. We had the opportunity here, since we've only single-loaded the streets, to detach the sidewalk on the far side to have the tree lawn and the street trees in that aesthetic, but then have the safer condition of the attached walk on the house side of the street. I spoke at some length before about the type of housing we do with all of its senior-friendly features. I won't go back into all of them. They're certainly still all part of our plan and our intents here with the large, oversized showers, the big bathrooms, the wide halls, the big doors, a place where someone can age in place without having to worry about being able to use and move around their home. And representative architecture is also similar. It's something we've been refining for quite some time. The exteriors are not only tasteful, but they're done with durable materials because the maintenance of them, we want longevity in those finishes. What I can talk about is a little bit exciting is that in this series of homes for Calmonte II, we're introducing a stepped-up elevation style, one that is going to reflect what's happening across the street in Calmonte I, as well as give us even a higher level of variety within the offering in Calmonte II. It's a stucco and a concrete tile roof elevation style, so we're really stepping it up for this project on the available styles of homes. And we have a long history of building this type of housing. This is some examples of projects that we've actually built, and what you're seeing us bring forward here is really the newest generation of senior-friendly lifestyle housing that we've been refining for quite a number of years. And finally, just a typical street scene, pretty picture to kind of show you the character of the street. It really is a very nice look when you don't have any two-story homes. We talk a lot about density as it pertains in two dimensions, but there is certainly an element of tasteful aesthetic when you reduce the vertical density of a subdivision by not having the two-story homes. And with that, just a summary, I won't even read through it. It's just a recap of everything that I've talked about, and we're very, very happy to answer any questions that you might have for us. I'm here, by the way, with some colleagues, and we should be able to answer any questions you might have for us. Thanks very much.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next, Lisa's got a presentation on an open-space question that came up.
So there was a couple of questions from a few planning commissioners over the last few days regarding the open-space percentages called out in their FDP. So, understanding that, there we go. There's a lot of information within those sheets. I tried to summarize it in a way that was a little easier to understand. Essentially, at the FDP level, kind of the overarching document that we're looking for comparison on is their Plan Development Amendment, which was recently approved in April. So I've compared all of these numbers to the numbers in the Plan Development. If you also want to compare it back to the town code, I have some of those numbers just for reference, as well as some other areas in town for kind of an equivalency, just so we can kind of visualize some of these numbers. If we pull out the single-family lots, being that they're private, the primary number within the application itself for open space that's publicly accessible is this 28.4%. Typically, within the town code for a single-family residential development with these types of densities, the code looks for 45%, with the ability to negotiate that downward based on certain conditions. Of that 28.4%, then it further broke it down, approximately 12% of that is manicured grass, 14% is irrigated, naturalized, which is somewhat usable, and then 2.5% is really a non-irrigated native. This is compared to their PD Amendment application, so you can see that they've upped the percentage of the manicured/irrigated quite substantially in response to some comments from the trustees. So factoring that in addition to that 28.4% that they're showing on their application, Calmonte Development as a whole has what we call Tract K, and it's a 3.8-acre parcel. And during the time the original Plan Development was approved in 2001, I believe, this area was contemplated as commercial. The remaining area that was approved is residential. That residential area got 95% of the credit for that Tract K. So this portion only gets 5% credit, which equates to an addition of about 1.8% for their open space, which brings you about 30. However, from staff's perspective at the time when their Plan Development was approved, our perspective was that this, these residences are actually immediately adjacent to Tract K and benefit as equally, if not more so, than the existing residents. And so if you include the entirety of Tract K, it brings the open space for this area to 47%. So put that in context a little bit. The density for these particular homes without Tract K is 3.06 dwelling units per acre. If you take the entire Calmonte Development as a whole, you're at 4.24, which their entire development as a whole is at 45%. If you view the whole thing as one. Other recent development, Coal Creek Crossing, kind of similar, a little lower density, real similar in open space. And then taking an existing residential development in town, I looked at Rock Creek in this area, north of Rock Creek Parkway, and I selected it because it kind of has a variety of different densities, but there's no other uses, so it's simply open space and residential. And that's 2.44 with an only open space only at 31%. So that's a little bit of context, just to provide some of the questions. Hopefully, that answers planning commission's questions on open space.
Okay, thank you. So this time, we would have public comment. Is any public comment on the public hearing? No. Okay. Well, now we'll just move into questions from the commission to either staff or the developer. Who'd like to start?
Well, I'll start with the question about the open space, and I'm asking it not because I think there's not enough.
Okay.
I'm asking it because I think we need to be, and this is not directed at the applicant, this is directed at staff, that we need to make sure that we're comparing apples-to-apples open space in every application, and this is not an apples-to-apples comparison. So the 28.4% is, and we've approved that.
Right.
So I'm not saying that we need to go back and put more in, but we can't use Tract K, we can't use the private lots, because they're private lots, you know, to come up with open space, never have in any other application in the past ever that I can think of. So I just want to make sure that we document it for the next future people that look at it, or if someone comes in and says, "Boy, I'd like to move into that," or "I'd like to have a 55% open space development," and they go there and say, "Is this 55% open space?"
Sure.
It doesn't look like it. So this is not directed at the applicant. I'm not suggesting we change anything, because we've already approved it. This is clearly to staff. We need to adjust this before we give it to town board.
I can absolutely update the staff report so that that is more clear and provide a greater breakdown of their numbers, you know, kind of within their FDP, you know, I just pulled that, but I can make it more clear in the staff report.
Right. You know, because as we discussed, we went back and forth, you know, Clint and I and you over the weekend about this, that my point is that we define it the same in every application, open space. And then, you know, again, this is not, I'm not trying to change anything to your application. I'm just saying that we need to do a better job of doing, comparing this and making this clear. Because it's next to Tract K, we know that we gave additional credit for that, and it's a big area of open space, but Tract K is not part of the 10.75 acres. So we get people confused when we start saying Tract K is part of the open space when it really isn't part of the open space. It's an open space adjacent to, that's owned by the town, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Yeah. So I think we have to be clear about that when we document this and take it forward to the town board. Again, I'm not saying that there's a problem with, there's a problem with saying it's 55%, because clearly it's not.
So when you say document it, do you mean on the staff report or on the actual drawing itself?
Both, because that's incorrect. It is not 55% open space, because 10.75 is all we're talking about, and we cannot include the private residential lots. Even though they're HOA-maintained, they're not open space. And then if we go into the long-sheet applications, we actually could even take out more, but I'm not going to, but I think we need to make note of this, because in the long sheets it says that their open space is common open space, is, Outlet A is considered private green space for use by the owners, primarily by the owners, and the common open space is also identified as for private owner use only. So when we say that it's 75% usable, usable to whom? Again, I'm not, I'm not trying to disrupt your application, I'm just, you know, I'm just making it clear when we put it on the documentation. So, and then we go back, and I read further, it says that the trail is the only piece that's public, the trail that goes through Outlet A, which is part of the 10.75%. We need to document this appropriately, at least that's my view, is that, and again, I'm not saying there's a problem with the amount of green space in there, but we cannot use residential private lots as part of the open space calculation. We've never done that in any other, I mean, you can't trespass upon their private lots. And according to the long sheets, the plats that we have here behind us, we can't even, as residents of Superior, trespass onto, off of the path onto Outlet A. So, you know, I just don't want to have a problem somewhere down the line, or someone come and say, because I've had this in other open-space areas in the past, that was clearly identified as open space, and someone came and tried to build a house on that open-space lot. I mean, I can go into that, that's another situation, but, so if we're not, if we don't find it, define it correctly, we can have problems in the future. So that, so I think, and again, it's not a problem, except for that we're not defining it right.
Sure.
Yes.
If I could offer one clarification, the outlots do, can carry a blanket easement for public access across the entirety of the lot that the trails go across. So our intent is certainly not to have any private fenced open space, it's that everything is wide open and available to the public.
Right, and I appreciate that. I just want to, you know, because when you get down to five years from now or 10 years from now, when someone reads a plat that's been recorded and it says, "This is private for the residents of that development only," and then someone gets in trouble or someone falls off the trail and breaks their leg or something, I don't know if there's any potential problems with that, but it clearly says on the plat on C1 that that is private green space for the private owner's use only. So I just, I'm bringing it up as a potential issue, and if it's not an issue, if there's some way we can say that we'll never document that's in there, that is okay, because it says now that only the trail is public and not the, and not the lane.
Well, I'll leave it up to the attorneys to talk afterwards, but certainly our intent with the blanket easement over the private open spaces, that it's available for everybody's enjoyment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so maybe that could be, that language could be looked at, because I think that's a very, that's a very valid point. Okay. Do you want to continue with your other items?
I've got a few more that are more clarification, probably. So, I'll go down. Okay, the locals, they're all local streets, and we talked about this the last time when you were here, maintained by the town, and also the trails are maintained by the town.
Some are, some aren't.
Well, it says all trails maintained by the town on the long streets, on the long plats, so, but you should look at that then, too.
We're working through that for the SIA coming up.
Okay. So I just want to make sure we're clear and we let the board know that we're maintaining as a town the streets, all three streets there, well, four actually, and, you know, income or whatever the big one is that goes across there, and the trails. And then this trash recycling provided by the HOA, so I assume the trash and recycling is provided by the HOA? You have three areas designated within the development for trash and recycling.
Yeah, along the trails.
No, in the homes. It's in the homes, I thought. Trash recycling is provided by whom for this development?
For the...
It said that you're providing three areas for a collection of trash and recycling.
Those are probably trail collections.
So the three areas that are referred to in the staff report are along the trails, so I can identify them on the plans if you'd like to see.
No, no, that's okay.
Okay.
Then who's going to do the trash and recycling within the development itself?
Typically...
The individual private homes, yes.
Typically, the HOA manages that. The reason being, we want...
Your HOA?
Yes.
Okay.
We want one truck coming through the neighborhood once a week. We don't want four providers coming through four times a week. So we'll roll that into the due structure and take care of it at the HOA level.
Does that happen at the rest of the Calmonte, at the town homes, too?
I believe so. I'm not certain.
Could we check that and see, you know, because I just want to know if we, as, you know, have that as part of a bigger town waste, trash and recycling, or if it's their responsibility and document that, because I thought that's what it meant when it said three areas for trash and recycling. But now that you mention it, also did say dog doo-doo, so, okay. Let's see, so private yards, we got that out, we'll get that out, and revised, okay. Okay, the current vesting rights on the property, are there, what are the current vesting rights on the property now? There's none, I suppose, since we don't have an FDP. Is that correct?
If there were any on the original PD, they would have been, long been expired, and I doubt that there were any created on this particular part of the property. So what they're asking for, though, is three years of vested rights to develop as shown here, and that's the time provision allowed for in the code.
Right, absolutely. And then when does it start? Does it start from the application, the 19th of September?
It would start from the date of approval.
Date of, date of submission?
From the board.
Date of submission or approval?
Approval.
Okay. I think it said date of submission, but, okay, that's fine. And then the timeline for the build-out, do you think you'll have this all built out in three years?
With some degree of confidence, I can say, yes, that that's the case.
Okay.
Barring some economic catastrophe or recession or something like that, we would certainly expect about six months for the infrastructure development or less, and then two a month would be a goal that I think is very achievable for the absorption, and with only 33, that would be about a year and a half.
Okay. And the vesting rights, will they say that it needs to be 50% completed or 100% completed or just started in three years?
The vested rights that are associated with the code are relatively simple. There's not a lot of phasing and things like that that we've seen for other...
But if you have an SIA, it'll say specifically, and the bond that's going to have to go along, the letter of credit, which will start as soon as you get that in place. So I just would like to know what the timing is for the bond and the letter of credit. Do you know that?
The vest is generally for the public improvements in infrastructure, not for the vertical construction. We'll have the lots developed and inspected within six months of approval.
Okay.
The town would, you know, I'm sure the applicant would appreciate longer vesting if they need longer than three years. In the past, we've extended those vesting, you know...
Well, I'm not suggesting that there's a problem with that. I'm just asking kind of for a timing perspective.
As far as the SIA and the phasing, the manager and the applicant have, you know, they're working through that, it will come before the board. There are three phases that will be considered part of the SIA, and the SIA speaks to that, as well as the letter of credit that would be associated with that, so that...
Well, this FDP will take, will then actually kind of take the place of an SIA, won't it? Will it or will it not?
The, Dave Euler, Boulder Creek Builders, the subdivision improvements agreement, generally, and as I've been through the draft one for this community one time, but generally the way they work is, there is a requirement for what our obligations are in regards to what public improvements on we're going to put in. Any that the city or the town might have would be identified, and then the agreed-upon bond or letter of credit, in the case of Superior, letter of credit amount is agreed upon. That letter of credit is put up to allow us to begin work. Once the public improvements are installed, accepted by the town for our warranty period, our initial acceptance, then the surety amount is reduced during the warranty period, which I believe is two years in Superior. So after we've got them all put in, we reduce the bond amount to the warranty period, which I'm not sure, it's either 10 or 25%, it varies by municipality. Then, prior to the expiration of the warranty period, we go in, we in the town agree what needs to be updated, repaired, so on, we make those repairs, city accepts it, and we get the remainder of our surety back. So it's really tied to the improvements agreement rather than to the vested rights for the actual development of the site.
The document that we have here that we're discussing tonight has a question mark by that number, the public improvements number and the amount of the letter of credit.
It's still being worked on.
Yeah, so it will be in there for the town board to look at?
Yes.
Okay, that was a question. And then, and then will you start construction upon approval of the utilities plan or the, this FDP?
The, we need all the public improvement plans approved to be, to begin the work, and historically, those run slightly longer behind the recorded documents, so reasonable projection, I think, and Alex could certainly correct me if I'm making an erroneous assumption.
Yeah, we'll get him repairing correctly here, okay.
That we'll have all of our improvements this calendar year and be in a position where we can, around the first of the year, begin doing dirt work and so on and getting the improvements underway. That's our current guess.
Excellent. That's a great guess. I love that guess. Okay, so then back to the, and I note that phase three, there were three phases listed in the document. One was the first 15 homes, and then the second 18 homes, and then, and then the third phase was to do the path through the Tract K, or, yes, I would have called Tract K. Okay, now, the utilities engineering costs, do we as a town spend money for that, or do we, we charge the developer, the applicant, for the engineering cost? And I, do you, do you cover the towns?
Oh, no. I think the town has agreed that they were going to bear the full cost of...
That's why I was... That's why I was afraid of, that's why I was looking at Alex back there.
Maybe I misunderstood, but, no, that's...
Yeah, Alex didn't hear you correctly.
That is, that is solely our, our expense, and that's a part of the entitlement process, is to get all that work done, then the town staff approves it.
We're talking probably, yeah, I know what you're saying, but I'm asking, we'll have expenses as a town, I believe, and I'm wondering, do we incur those ourselves just to, you know, to work with them to create the...
Well, Alex Aronella, Public Works Director, and developer is responsible for designing all the infrastructure on his site, in terms of providing water and sewer services to the site. I mean, we have, we've been planning for this development, we have capital improvements, you know, to get water supply, to get sewer, to provide for sewer treatment and all that stuff, so that's, that's all the system-wide improvements the town undertakes, and we've already made those investments. We collect tap fees, you know, sewer tap fees and water tap fees to provide for those system development costs that we incur, you know, for water supply, water treatment and all that. But anything on their side, any of the infrastructure on their site, is on their dime.
Okay, and then, so that goes to the $982,000, is that from the tap fees that we're going to get? Will that, the $982,000 listed on the pros that we're going to receive, is that tap fees or is that building permits?
It's building inspection fees, use taxes and things of that.
Yeah, use taxes and another $35,000, I think, or no, there's another 300 and some thousand, I think, or 280, something like that. Then, so, the potable, potable water usage is 6,600, okay, but the irrigation reuse, we're going to provide as a town our reuse water at zero cost to this development? They're getting 18,300 gallons per day of reuse water to...
No, they'll be, we'll provide the lines, we'll service them with our reuse water. Reuse water comes from the wastewater treatment plant, and we'll pump it, we pump it up on the hill, and then they'll have access to our system. They will get a meter for that, and they will pay water fees, reuse...
Based on reuse water?
Reuse water fees, so there's different rate structure for the reuse water.
Okay, that wasn't in there anywhere, I didn't know if there was a charge for that or if it was provided. Okay, and then, I'm almost done, I'm sorry. Then, then the, so then it says that there are new net revenues to the town of $35,000. Is that for the sewer fees and the property tax, or what is that $35,000 of?
You know, I don't have Paul's breakdown in front of me, so I would hate to...
Okay, that's fine, just put that down as a question and make sure we document, and does that include property taxes? I'd be curious how much property taxes we think we'll get out of this property.
That would be my assumption, but again, he has a spreadsheet, I mean, I don't know. Paul develops those, the finance director, we can get you more information.
Yeah, it's not so much for me as much as if we forward it on to the board, I think it'd be good to make a breakdown of what that $982 million is, comes from, where it comes from, and the other 200 and some thousand or whatever it was, I lost it, no, and then, and then the $35,000 of net new revenue, where that comes from. And then, okay, then I see that there's one, there's trees along the landscaping, along the streets, and that's great, you know, that's per the requirements. Then I saw on your elevation views that there was one tree in front and one tree in back of each lot, is that what you're going to have, is an additional two trees per lot?
I have the landscape plan, I can verify that.
What is, what is shown on the landscape plan is exactly what we've proposed, so there are street trees along both sides of each street.
Yeah.
So, by virtue of having just single-loaded streets, then, yes, there's, there's trees front and rear on the lots, and of course, in addition to the onsite landscaping that we install as well.
Well, somewhere I read that...
But there are street trees along both sides of the street.
I think on L7, it said that there would be one tree in front and one tree in back of each lot, or it showed it, so, in addition to...
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay, thank you, that's great. One in front and back is wonderful.
So, the one in front is the street tree.
Why don't you come up to the mic and read that in? To start with your name and...
Leslie Yui, that's the newest group.
Thank you.
And yes, you are correct, the street, the tree shown in front is intended to be a street tree, the one in the rear is the, there's a rear yard tree, and because these are loaded to the street, there will be an additional row of street trees, and the intent was to buffer the homes.
Okay, so there will only be one in front of each home along the street where the garage is, and then on the other side, you'll have a row of trees, one every 40 feet for, along that tree path.
The tree lawn, yes.
Yeah, yeah, tree lawn, and then, but there'll be one in the backyard of those people, too. Okay, excellent, that's great. Now, can you talk about the, well, maybe this is just a question, the trail lighting is black powder-coated bollards. Do we have black bollards throughout any other part, is that what we have in the rest of the town now? Okay, great, I didn't know for sure, they used to be green. And then, how wide are these streets, are they 30 or 32 feet wide?
Thirty-four.
Huh?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, excellent, that's even better yet. Okay, and then, and I, and I love the look of the, of the elevation views, I like the fourth one that you came up with, even the last time when you were here, I thought it was excellent, and I would, I couldn't tell from those elevation views whether or not every door, front door is covered, but I think most of them are, because I've been walking around the town a lot lately, and the houses that don't have it covered over their front door are really kind of bad, and if I'm an older person like I am and trying to get in my house and unlock my door, I'd like to have that covered, so it's just kind of more of a personal comment.
We provide covered front and rear porches.
Okay.
With zero steps to both, we consider that outdoor living, and as main floor living space, we provide zero steps and a cover to both front and rear porches.
Okay, that's excellent, because that's, that's very necessary. And then the last thing about the elevation views is window boxes, I see window boxes on there, and I think for people, I've seen a lot of window boxes throughout Superior, and as we get older, I'm speaking for myself here, it's really hard to maintain window boxes, and if you're not maintaining your yard, you know, because it's being done by the HOA, will the HOA maintain the window boxes, too?
Would not maintain the window boxes because that's part of the structure.
Okay, and if they, if you aren't, I would personally, again, say, don't put window boxes on, because they tend to be, start looking kind of trashy or have a lot of plastic flowers in them after a while, and, and I think it looks cleaner and neater without the window boxes, personal preference. And then my last comment is, and this is more directed to the staff, is that we're not calculating correctly the units per acre, because you have to remove the public right-of-way, you have to use the gross lot area, not the gross development area, so the, the units per acre would be 5.91, but we can, I mean, 5.6, so we can, they're still within the requirement, but I think we have to talk about that Lisa after, outside this meeting. And with that, I'm going to stop, thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from board members? Commissioner Hurd?
I just had a quick one, I'm not sure whether it's a town requirement or not, but when grading is done, will they have a truck out there with the water, to water down the dust?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
You may be aware, there's some moderately expensive soils in the town of Superior, so there will be, that's a key component to the earthwork operation, is to keep everything proper moisture content and compacted properly. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Okay, I have a few myself. On Sheet Five, or C5, the narrative, it says, in the, in the background section, it says, "Town purchased Richmond property and it's zoned," they're talking about the Richmond property at, the town just purchased, the 15-acre parcel, it has the statement, "is zoned public open space."
Oh, that's an inaccuracy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, correct that, please. Okay, Commissioner Dozal covered my next two. In the plans, it referenced, referenced, the houses, referenced "storage bay," just like a further explanation of what, what a storage bay is and what that looks like.
Which plans are those?
In your, in your home.
Is there a car garage on the 40s? Okay. It's an oversized two-car garage.
Okay.
It's the size of a three-car garage, but with two garage doors.
Okay, just a deeper one, okay, yeah, I saw that on the renderings, it looks good.
Pardon me, sorry, my, I just double-checked that comment on C5 and how I read it, and I might be wrong, but it says, "The parcel to the west of McCaslin," which is the Listoka open space. So, that one is open space.
This one says the town just purchased it, the comment that I read.
Well, the large parcel has since been acquired by the town of Superior, but west of McCaslin...
Okay, okay.
So, that's how I read that.
West, okay, all right, two different, all right, all right, I'm mistaking, I'm mistaking it for the Richmond property.
No, just thank you for reading it, I missed that.
Okay. Okay, so the irrigation for the home lots, is that water coming from the homes themselves as opposed to the reuse water? Or is, or is all the grass on all of the property being done by reuse water?
So, typically, in a single-family residential development, you have the, the individual homeowner controls the irrigation for their lot. In this instance, because it's HOA-maintained, it allows for the provision to use the reuse. We have some regulations that are governed by the state as far as who can reuse a potable system, the homeowners cannot have control over this particular system, but being that it's HOA-controlled, and the HOA will have control through a master meter for the non-potable water, that's how we're able to use it for a single-family residential.
Okay, I think that's great, and I asked the same question about the Remington development, and the answer it was given was, "We can't do it." Now, maybe, maybe that's changed, or, okay.
Polk Creek Crossing?
Yes.
No, we're doing the same thing in Polk Creek Crossing, where all the open space, common open space is going to be the reuse water. The hose, hose bibs on the house itself will be potable water.
Okay, but the pop-up sprinklers watering the grass is going to be reuse? Okay, that's great, I mean, that's, that just makes a lot of sense. Okay, and then my last question is just about the time, just about the timing, I think in the, in the earlier presentation, it sounded like you were going to get much further along with the townhomes before starting these, but now, these are going to start much sooner, maybe you could talk a little bit more about the, the timing for construction of these homes?
We had hoped that the townhomes would be selling more quickly than they are, but as we began the process on this project and working with the staff and so on, we were strongly encouraged to move this one along as quickly as we could, and so, a large component of the design approach that we've taken here, the, the fewer homes, but larger homes and so on, is so that we will be able to have this neighborhood open for sales, because they're expected to be more expensive than the townhomes, and, and so we believe that we can do that, and it's not going to negatively affect the values or the sales in the townhomes. So, right now, it looks like they'll both be going at the same time.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any other questions before I close the public hearing? Okay, so once I close the public hearing, we won't have any more opportunities for questions with the applicant or staff, we'll just need to do discussion at that point.
I'd like to make one comment on when we provide our pros and cons, I would like to have a discussion or maybe to consider that under pro that we should say that we, we considered this a very good, or if not the best utilization of this small interior space within the town of Superior. I think, you know, those are the kind of pros that I'm looking for, and this is not the applicant, again, it's our pros that we need to think about as a town. Why is this in the best interest of the town? Because this space just fits this kind of a development, and we've considered that and thought about that, that's a pro to me that's not listed on here, you know, getting the money is one thing, but this is the best use, utilization, I think, for this particular small interior acreage within the town of Superior, and it fits with the surrounding neighborhoods, which is very important, too, a lot of times we don't think about, and that's part of the comprehensive plan, that we have to have it fit with and, and flow into the surrounding, and, you know, the applicant's even trying to make that happen within their whole community with the townhomes, and I think that's a pro that we need to, or I would like to consider us listing that, because we, we spent a lot of time talking about that and thinking about that, and that really says that this is a good development at this time, and it fits well within the town of Superior, rather than just saying additional housing will support the town's existing retail. I think it's additional housing that fits what we need right now is really important. And again, I want to make sure that we detail out what these numbers are, the $982,000, what that is, system development fees, I don't know if that's building permits or tap fees or what that is, I understand the $375,000 for use taxes, and then also that $35,000 I've read someplace else for ongoing net revenues. And then under cons, I think we need to have a discussion or an item that says, what will be the additional cost of services for the town, and, and if there aren't any, then we should say that, but if there are, then I think we should say that, and Alex wants to get up and speak about that. There must be some additional costs for the town associated with this.
I think the way Paul, our finance director, normally prepares that analysis, I think the net $35,000 includes our costs, so he takes into account the revenues coming in with this development, takes into account our costs, and then the net, that $35,000 net is what his calculation is of our costs, the revenues expected minus our costs.
Okay, that would be great, then, if we could have that breakdown, you know, and present that to say, here's additional services costs, you know, and here's the money we're going to give back for providing the water, the reuse water, the, you know, potable versus non-potable, you know, and all this kind of stuff, and, and additional fire, no, it wouldn't be fire, additional police, or I don't know, you know, I don't know what it is, there probably won't be any cost for additional police, because that's a very small area, but whatever it is, whatever Paul's put in there, I think it would be good to detail that out in a, in a little schedule.
I'm sure Paul has it all broken down.
Oh, yeah, he'll have it.
He has a spreadsheet, he just gives me the summary.
Okay, thank you.
One other thing I wanted to bring up. Do you have your...
The HOA does vacuuming and washing of those seniors, too.
I just wanted to point out, we had a lot of discussions about the, the trail and how it fits into our transportation vision, but we wanted to have a separated trail along McCaslin as far as we could go, and so we're trying to do this, and by eliminating Cass Long from going through, now we have a nice continuous segment without having to cross another driveway. But when we get here, you know, we wanted to bring it down somehow, this ended up being the best place to, to cross Rock Creek, so if you're a recreational bicyclist and want out just having, you know, going for a ride, that'll be a nice way, if you're a, you know, you're a commuter bicyclist, whatever, it's not the straightest line, and so you, you would probably, you know, use this to come back on to McCaslin's shoulder. We do have the Rock Creek Bridge here, the culvert is not quite wide enough for a good bike lane there, or a separated trail, so we couldn't get a separated trail, you know, across that, that bridge, and that may be something we add down the future. So, but the bicyclists will have a choice, they can use this and come down, go through the roundabout, or they can come this way and then go under Colton and not have to cross the street, so there's, there's both options there, and that's, that's how it ended up. We wanted a, probably a more convenient here, but this just wasn't feasible. And so, the Phase Three, they're going to be working with us in urban drainage, because they're going to be building a structure here, which means it may affect the flood plane, so they have to go through analysis, get approved by urban drainage, so it could take a year, a couple of years to get that process approved, that's why we have that separate Phase Three.
I think that's great trail, I can't wait to walk on it, and I appreciate that we're going to be able to walk behind those people's houses, because it's going to be beautiful to walk in instead of along the street, it's going to be great. So, I, I thank you for letting us use that, other residents of Superior, to actually walk through pretty much along the edge and through your development. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions of staff or the developer? Okay, seeing none. Public hearing's closed, and now we'll go into discussion. So, if each commissioner, if you'd like to say anything, you can, if you don't have anything to say, you don't have to say anything, but if you just want to speak to what you, what you like about it, concerns about it, and so on, prior to our vote.
I like the idea that it's primarily going to be a senior residence development, because Superior really doesn't have anything like that, and it's important, I know that the... I know that Sandy Pennington and I discussed that a couple of years ago. And it's really kind of cool. So I congratulate you on that.
Okay, thanks. Next.
Walked the property. I think it has a nice feel to it. The shift in the terrain and then you can still see the mountains going in different, from different angles. I just, this feels good.
Okay.
I think I speak for a lot of us in the town of Superior when we're, we're very excited that Calamante is actually coming to fruition and will get finished with the passage of, of this development. So I, I think it looks beautiful on paper. I can't wait to see it in real life.
Okay.
I agree. I think it looks, looks beautiful and I'm looking forward to my mother-in-law moving in there.
Commissioner Duzel?
No, I don't have any other comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
My comments would be that I, I like what I see. I like the way these two have reconfigured Castillon and I think that makes the trail connection there much better. And I think it will make those homes and those homeowners much happier not to have another through street there. So I'm, I'm very happy that that was the final decision on Castillon Street. I think it's going to provide the town with a much-needed housing type that doesn't exist. And that's a good thing. I've heard a lot of people say that they'd like to move into a house like this. So I think we're finally going to get some to offer. And that reuse water, I'm so happy that is the answer that I had hoped for on that. And I, I think really that's probably a very innovative thing that this town is doing with the reuse water and that the fact that we're getting it, you know, right up to people, the edge of people's houses, that just, it makes so much sense. And I, I would hope that we would do that as much as we can on future developments. It's a great work. All right, with that, I will entertain a motion from one of the commissioners who'd like to.
I would just like to ask a question, though, that when we make a motion to move this forward, I want to be able to make sure that we have some of these corrections made to your staff report that we talked about. And also that we add a pro and, and detail out the costs of the, of to the town, you know, so we just make sure we understand that. And then the services, I mean, the additional cost of the services. And then also change some of those numbers, you know, to reflect it accurately.
I think it's doubtful that we'll be able to correct the actual drawings prior to this going to the board. The packet will have to be prepared by Thursday. This is going to the board on the 27th. So I can absolutely update the staff report, but without speaking for the applicant, I would hate to commit to having the drawings changed.
Okay, but, okay, I understand that. But we will, before we actually record them with the, with the county, I want to have that accurately reflected on those sheets.
So the town, within the town code, there's extensive language regarding the definitions of different types of open space.
Yes, I know. I read them today.
Yeah.
So we can, we can go back and talk about them afterwards, but I think we need to be clear, and this is not, again, the applicant's issue. It's really a concern that, or a clarification that we need to make with staff is that we need to calculate open space the same every time and per our municipal code and not per the, and also the density units per dwellings, per dwelling units per.
Acre.
Acre also is very clear in the municipal code. So we can talk about this after this, but I would like to have that corrected. And if we, if we have to add an addendum or another page or something to explain why that is, that's okay.
Yeah, I mean, clearly I can update the staff report as far as the landscape breakdown and make sure that we, you know, we'll take the numbers from their application and apply the, the code percentages requirements as far as the density goes.
Well, we'll talk about this afterwards. It's not important for this because this has already been approved. It, it's not, it's just that I want to make sure that we have it accurately reflected in a consistent manner on all of our applications. And this one clearly is not correct according to how I read the code. So, and how I've been involved in other ones. So we can talk about this offline, I think. I would just like to have that reflected in a report or somewhere.
So in past resolutions, we've done conditions and then we've done, and then we've done comments.
More than what we had, conditions as well as comments at this point, yeah.
Would you like to, would you think, which of those you think would be appropriate as, as conditions versus comments?
I think it's a condition to make sure we have the numbers right. You know, that's a condition that we have to have the numbers right.
If I could just interject, to me, these are sounding like concerns that need to be looked into and clarified as this goes to the board and probably should not be conditions of approval of the plans in front of you, at least approval to send them on to the board.
Okay, that's fine. These are a conditions are, I, I, I don't care what word you use. So you're probably right. That what I'm saying is that we're saying, we would, we would move this forward to the board, but we're saying before we recommend that they approve it, it's, it needs to be corrected. The numbers need to be corrected. So whatever you call that, a comment or a condition, but we would say, I would say that we need to make sure we got our numbers right.
Okay, and I would also, as, as in every resolution that comes before you, there's the catch-all condition for minor and technical red line changes. I would submit that'll, some of these issues are covered in that.
Okay, and you think they're covered? Okay.
And, you know, to the extent that Lisa and the rest of the staff has been listening to your comments and concerns and will send those forward and these items will be addressed before final approval as needed.
Then they can be a comment.
Okay.
So maybe you could list off some of these comments and I think at a minimum, we should include a list of comments rather than just saying it's, it's red line and, and technical changes.
So in summary, the comments that I've heard to date are to confirm their open space calculations based upon the language and definitions described in the code. So what's referred to as common space, what's referred to as usable open space, that type of thing? Is that what you're looking for?
Just, yes, to define the percentage open space according to the municipal code. You don't just add all the other stuff, you know, but does not include private, private properties, so private lots. I mean, that's one thing we can take out right away. That's pretty easy to do. So do it, you can say the comment is we need to describe it or define the percentage open space based on the municipal code and it does not include private lots. Or it will not include private lots.
Or it should not.
Or it should not. It will not. It's more than should, it will.
It will not.
And then the second one would be to provide a breakdown of revenues and fees?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm writing to make sure I capture all this accurately. Include the addition of a pro to the pros list. Stating to the effect that this development proposal is the best use of land in this area. Did I capture that? And a con, so let me clarify the con. You had requested to include the additional cost of service. That would be captured in that breakdown? So I can, we still like to see that listed as a con?
Why is that a con?
It's not a con.
Versus just a information?
It's just an informational. When you get it in the breakdown, it's not a con, but we should say that, well, that's always a con if it's going to cost the town money. But if it nets of a positive, then it's not a con necessarily. So if, I didn't realize that the services were in that net number, that 35. So it's, if we get that breakdown, then I think, you know, like what Alex was talking about.
Then it's a pro.
It would not, it might not be a, yeah, so that's right. That's right. I just didn't see it anywhere here, you know, so.
We'll have to discuss the, the density. I interpret it as calculated correctly. So that one we'll have to chat about with. I don't know at this point unless like to, I can read the language from the code on how to define density if anyone, or if we want to just chat about it later and.
We can chat about it later because I can read it, too. Where it says gross lot, I mean, yeah, gross lot area, not gross development area. But we can talk about that. Let's just, let's just define that after the point. If it changes, then we'll make that, you know, that's not, that's more of a, let's, I want, again, this is not an applicant issue. This is a issue going forward that we need to define it the same on every application. And when we start throwing in things that aren't part of it and we start, we can't compare apples to apples when we go across, and if we've always done it incorrectly, then we probably should continue to do it incorrectly.
Or now.
You know, and then we'll have to change the municipal code, though, because it clearly says something different. Let's talk about that afterwards.
Okay.
Because we're not going to change the application. We can't change the PDA. So I'm just saying that as we document it, we need to make sure we're documenting apples to apples comparison.
Have we, have we captured all the comments?
I believe so. And we also have the tape, so if there's any hesitation. One thing to consider is, like I said, this is going before the board on the 27th, which the packet for that is going to have to go out on Thursday. So this is going to be relatively quickly turnaround as far as from the staff's perspective as well as applicant perspective. So we will do our very best to make sure that we get all of these comments addressed. If you'd like to, you know, be in touch offline, any of you, regarding any of these questions, I'd be happy to discuss it.
I just thought of something else, too, that I asked about that we never put down here. And I think this is a legal concern. Again, I'm concerned about if we're walking through on, if residents are walking through those trails, you know, where's the legal release from liability that we need to provide or that maybe Boulder Creek builders would want to have? Is there a need for that? You know, so, and again, that's.
You were referencing some language that seemed to speak to the fact that it was only available to residents, but we heard something differently. So maybe you could check that.
Yeah, the plat includes an access easement throughout Outlet A. So even though it's privately owned and maintained, there is a public access easement.
For the entire Outlet A. Just, I just want to make sure that that's there.
I will, we can confirm and double check.
Because on the, on L7, I think it says, or no, I'll have to find it. Wherever it was, on one of the, it says that it was, only the trail itself was for public access and easement, not the open space of Outlet A. So we can just clarify that language, too, from a legal perspective. It's more for your legal concern than ours, you know, I mean. Because if someone falls and trips on, on your property, I would think you'd want to have something there that says they can't sue you because they're traversing that trail.
Okay, so we can add that to the comments?
You bet. Clarify it.
Get some clarification on that. Okay. Okay, so I think we're good on our list of comments. So one of the commissioners like to read the resolution?
You want to read the resolution?
No, you can do it.
No.
You don't want to do it?
Okay. A resolution of the planning commission of town.
Start with make a motion to.
I move.
Okay.
Okay. I move to approve of that. Resolution of the planning commission of the town of Superior recommending approval of the final plat for Calmenti II in case SUB-FP-2014-3. And recommending approval of a final development plan for Calmenti II in case number FDP-2014-3.
We have a motion. Do you have a resolution number?
Resolution number 10.
Okay, this is resolution number 10, so PC 10. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Eaton.
Let this tag out.
Second by Commissioner Momerts. All those in favor? Okay, passage unanimous. Thank you very much. Congratulations. All right.
Could I take a two-minute break and chat with the applicants before they leave so we can make sure we're, sorry to do that. Staff's, we're short staff tonight.
All right. Planning Commission recess. Try to finalize this tonight or just continue discussion on it?
You know, ultimately that's up to you. It's kind of what we had discussed last meeting, potentially continuing this on over the next few meetings to develop this maybe post-election. However, if the planning commission tonight wants to approve it, it's your work plan. So, you know, you're most certainly able to do so. These are just kind of a summary of the comments and the ideas that, as I heard them or interpreted them. So, you know, feel free to change, add, edit as you'd like.
Okay. Comments?
I think it's great.
I do, too.
Okay. My only comment concern is on the Coal Creek Corridor item. And you put a comment in here that OSAC is currently charged with this area per the town board. And I guess before, I would want to direct Planning Commission to direct itself to put it on here. It would be, I'd rather receive that direction from the town board.
Typically, that's how it works in the past with other committees. Commission's a little different. One thing to consider, you certainly can leave it on a work plan, but, you know, planning commission doesn't have a budget to examine this issue in any great length with, you know, a consultant such as the board might do. You certainly could request it of the board. You're entitled to take up discussion items, you know, as you see fit. It doesn't have to be charged from the board, but just whether or not they consider it, you know, without having requested that.
Okay. Anyone else have any thoughts or comments on that?
On the Coal Creek Corridor, last time we talked in, I believe the thing was east of the bridge. So I think I would like to maybe clarify it more if that's. So I think I would like to maybe clarify it more, if that's what we're talking about, is east of the bridge, because I don't think west of the bridge, I mean, that's private property.
Second Avenue Bridge is what you're speaking of, right? Yes, and we did talk about that last meeting. That was...
Does that make sense to everybody to do it east and not the whole entire corridor?
And even as, if I remember properly, even east of Second Avenue on the north side, before you get to Grasso Park, there are a few residents in there that are even private as well. So there are, you know, the former Rogers property is private in through there. Grasso's public. Rogers, we're assuming we'd have some, you know, potential development there with the, you know, developer in the future. So even east of Second Avenue, there are a few, some private properties in there as well.
Yeah, you could, didn't you have that in? I thought I saw one that had that on there. Didn't the email one that you sent out today include that?
No, this is just what I emailed.
Oh, okay.
But that was discussed.
That was discussed, yeah.
And I think that should be, that should be noted.
Okay. Would you prefer to change it to east of McCaslin, or do you want to leave it east of Second Avenue for now?
East of Second Avenue would probably...
In any, and I think you could even add in any PD or dev, a PDE area, you know, maybe that way, then we get out of the private property. What do you think about that, Phyllis?
Yeah.
You know, just say in any, considering Coal Creek and the utilization of the Coal Creek Corridor in, in a PD or planned development areas, because most likely...
That's what it would be.
The former Rogers property will become a PDE.
How about something such, Coal Creek Corridor, east of Second Avenue Bridge, in any area that is redeveloped?
Yeah.
Just to keep it, along the broad.
Right, right.
Sure. So I'm fine leaving it in here, and, and I think, you know, at whatever point the board looks at it, they can say, like it, don't like it.
And as planning commission, you know, you guys will have a vital role in any development review that comes forth with the Coal Creek Corridor, and if there's any background information that you'd like to see, or any other, you know, similar ideas as development applications come forth, you know, staff can certainly present those to you at that time, too, so.
I think what's good about this is that it puts it on our radar as a planning commission, that it's an important item that another committee is actually looking at. And so if we get an applicant before us, we need to keep that in mind, that that is more than just the land that's being determined we have to connect with other people, you know? Because I think we've been accused in the past, you know, I'm not saying this, this body that sits here now, but the planning commission has been accused of not connecting with some of the committees sometimes, you know, and, and the committees are here to help not only the town board, but also us as we review those applications. So I think it's good, it puts it on our, reminds us that that is something we need to think about if an applicant comes forward.
Okay. Okay, so would the commission like to just go ahead and approve this 2015 work plan? We can just kind of check the, check the box on this one and have it done? Okay. Do we need to make a motion to...
You can do a motion.
Okay, let's do a motion. Who'd like to do a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2015 work plan.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Malya. Malya?
And second by Commissioner Eaton. All those in favor? Passes unanimous? Okay.
Great.
We have a 2015 work plan. All right, item number eight, staff announcements.
Um, yeah, do you have something? Go ahead, Alex.
He's so excited, he can't wait.
Hey, I'm here, right? Just a few updates on the transportation plan and some of your recommendations on those. We submitted three applications for funding through Denver Regional Council of Governments for two trail projects. One to connect the McCaslin BRT station to, to the McCaslin underpass, and then behind Old Chicago to Coal Creek was, was a project. And included in that was a, a bike shelter, bike cage shelter in that as part of that. Second trail project was to connect the BRT station going west between Marshall and US 36 up to the Davison Underpass under US 36. So those two, I'm not sure whether they're going to get the funding or not, but we submitted applications for that. Another recommendation in the transportation plan was call and ride, and we submitted an application for call and ride, so reinstituting the call and ride service in Superior. So those three. And then another one that's, we've been working with US 36 Corridor jurisdictions and 36 Community Solutions on several improvements or enhancements along US 36. We just received the draft BRT operations plan of how they're going to change bus routes and so forth, so we've been making comments on that. And then there's a unique, a unique plan that we're working on in terms of wayfinding. How to get, you know, once we build all these bikeways, how do you get from the bikeway to destinations like the town center or town hall? How do you get to the BRT station? How do you get through the BRT station? How to make the BRT station more user-friendly? So any, any other things? But we're developing signed templates and so forth, which at some point, maybe the planning commission can review that and see if we can take that more town, town-wide to provide more wayfinding throughout, throughout the community. So I just want an update on that.
Great, thank you, Alex.
Yeah, thank you.
Alex and his staff have been working extremely hard and long to make sure the US 36 expansion is, is good for, for our community. We had chatted last planning commission meeting about the remainder of the year, and I just wondered if there was any feedback from the planning commission as to doing the Chapter 16 updates relatively soon, or if there was a desire to kind of push that out into 2015? I wonder your thoughts.
I would suggest waiting to the new year.
Okay.
Because there's no push, no, no really reason, it's just a cleanup, right?
I don't see any risk at this point. It's, a lot of them are just, you know, some inconsistencies wherein, you know, where there's an inconsistency, the more stringent rule applies, things of that nature. There's a few policy-level things that we might bring to you for discussion, but there's no risk in delaying a few months. But if, the risk, I guess, potentially would be if we get an onslaught of development applications, then this may get bumped again. So it's, it's up to you.
When is our next meeting?
At this point, we don't have an anticipated meeting through the remainder of the year with the exception of the Chapter 16 cleanup. We have no applications that are, that staff has received at this time. Should we get one, I think it would be doubtful. I mean, there'd be an outside chance that we could hold a meeting late in December, but with the holidays, I think at this point, it's doubtful that, that we'll have a meeting.
How long would it take to do the cleanup?
I would say probably two meetings, potentially. You know, staff has prepared a list of what our suggested changes would be. We'll draft a redline of the existing code versus what we're proposing for changes for your review. I anticipate then that planning commission would take the time to discuss that, potentially bring forth additional items, or confirmation of changes, or some other suggestions, which then potentially staff could bring back for a final review, and however long after that it would need to be, but a minimum of two meetings.
And I was thinking of the holidays, kind of, you know? We can't have a meeting on November 4th because that's election, and there will be a voting center here at town hall, so that meeting's completely out. So it'd be the second meeting in November or in December, and then you get into the holidays. And that's why I'm just thinking, the first of the year might be a little bit better, but whatever.
I think to push it to the first of the year is probably preferable. Okay.
All right, well, then, unless we let you know otherwise...
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, Happy Thanksgiving, Happy Halloween.
All together.
All right, anyone have anything else? Okay. Meeting adjourned.
Good job, Mr. Paulson.